I hereby call the fifth day of the second special session of the 24th Congress to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, please call the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Aye, ma'am. Casalilia, aye.
Senator Arthas. Senator Asher.
Duoklamalabna.
Senator Chure.
Present.
Senator Christian. Senator Colin. Senator Conman. Floor Leader Marar. Senator Mutong. Senator Nemea.
Yes.
Five Speaker Romalo.
Aye, ma'am.
Senator Segura.
Yes, good morning.
Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, thirteen members are present.
Thank you. We have a formed transact business. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Item four, reading of the journal, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader.
Speaker, thank you and good morning. I move that Congress dispense with the reading of the journal.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the journal. Any discussion, objections? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Item five, presidential communications. We on receipt of number twenty-four dash one seventy-four and number twenty-four dash one seventy-five, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, and those are two important concerns. So I believe it's the Special Committee on Climate Change and also J and Go. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none.
Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next item is item seven, member communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item eight, departmental communications, none at the moment, Mr. Speaker. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, we do not have, Mr. Speaker. Item ten, state communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, we do not have, Mr. Speaker. Item number twelve, municipal or town communications, none. Item thirteen, foreign government communications, none, Mr. Speaker. And item number fourteen, miscellaneous communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Order of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the order of the day now is item fifteen, sending government reports, none, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Item sixteen, special committee reports, none also, Mr. Speaker. Item seventeen, for assignment of measures and communications, please refer to referral sheet number twenty-four dash twenty-nine, Mr. Speaker.
Chairs and members, please take note of the referral sheet. Next item.
Unfinished business for item eighteen, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Thank.
Chairman Christian.
I'd like to move that we go to resolution calendar first.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress moved down to the resolution calendar and no objections. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now on item number twenty, which is the resolution calendar. First resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The first resolution under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash eighty-eight for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash eighty-eight is a resolution setting the ceiling of the total funds estimated to be available for appropriation from the General Fund of the Federated States of Magnesia for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Chairman Nemea.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the deferment of that to the end of the calendar, resolution calendar.
Any second. It's been moved and seconded that CR number twenty-four dash eighty-eight be moved to the end of the resolution calendar. So, no objection. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. The resolution has now been moved to the end of the resolution calendar. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution is Congress Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash eighty-two for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash eighty-two is a resolution to amend the official rules or procedure for the twenty-fourth Congress of the Federated States of Magnesia to remove the requirement of election of the chief clerk and the legislative council at the beginning of each Congress.
Chairman Chure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the adoption of the said resolution.
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess. Madam Chair Segura.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for adoption of CR number twenty-four dash sixty-eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-four dash sixty-eight. Discussion. No objection. No further discussion. Question has been called for. Debate is now closed. We will vote on said resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number twenty-four dash sixty-eight. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash seventy-two for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash seventy-two is a resolution approving and accepting a grant from the United States Federal Aviation Administration, or FAA, in the amount of forty million sixty-nine thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars to provide funding support for the Koshai International Airport runway rehabilitation project, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Chairman Goland.
Move for adoption of the said resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-four dash seventy-two. Discussion. If no further discussion, no objection. Question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote on the said resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number twenty-four dash seventy-two. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash seventy-three for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash seventy-three is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from the United States Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, Center for Substance Abuse Treatment to provide supplemental funding for the FSM Department of Health and Social Affairs State Opioid Response Project, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wish to defer CR number twenty-four dash seventy-three to January session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer this resolution until January session. The motion is not favorable, so we will vote. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now deferred its action on CR number twenty-four dash seventy-three to the next session of Congress. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the resolution calendars, Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash seventy-four for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash seventy-four is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars from the United States Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, Center for Substance Abuse Treatment to fund the Substance Abuse Prevention Treatment and Recovery Services block grant, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for adoption of CR twenty-four dash seventy-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-four dash seventy-four. Discussion. If no further discussion, no objection. Question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote on its adoption. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number twenty-four dash seventy-four. Next, next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash seventy-seven for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash seventy-seven is a resolution to approve and accept a grant in the amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred forty-one dollars from the United States Department of Health and Human Services, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, providing funding for the FSM Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity for Prevention and Control of Emerging Infectious Diseases, or ELC, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for adoption.
I second the motion.
It's removed and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-four dash seventy-seven. Discussion. If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on its adoption. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number twenty-four dash seventy-seven. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash seventy-eight for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash seventy-eight is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Artichi Nena to serve as a member of the Federated States of Magnesia Miker Board of Directors, representing the state of Koshai.
Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for adoption of CR number twenty-four dash seventy-eight.
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-four dash seventy-eight. Discussion.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Our nominee served on the board, Miker Board, but his term was up or expired, but he's still willing to assist and he's representing Koshai. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a renomination? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Question.
No objection? And no further discussion? Question was called for, so we will vote by secret ballot. Chief Clerk, please pass out the ballots. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please announce the results.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have a total of twelve yeses and one no.
Thank you. With that, Congress has adopted CR number twenty-four dash seventy-eight. Let us please give the tele governor an aye. So, Chief Clerk, next item, next, next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution under the resolution calendars, Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash seventy-nine for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash seventy-nine is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Dr. Marcella Collin to serve as a member of the Federated States of Magnesia Miker Board of Directors, representing the state of Ponte.
Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for adoption of CR number twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-four dash seventy-nine. Discussion.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is also another nominee who was served, was serving on the last port and the term was up. So she's still willing to assist our Miker Board. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have another renomination. Any further discussion? No objection and no further discussion? Question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote by secret ballot. Chief Clerk, please pass out the ballots. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please call the, announce the results.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. All thirteen members that are present voted for the nominee under the said resolution.
With that, Congress has adopted CR number twenty-four dash seventy-nine. Please let us give Ms. Gallin a next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution is Congressional Resolution Number twenty-four dash eighty-one for adoption. CR number twenty-four dash eighty-one is a resolution approving and accepting a grant CR number 24 dash 81 is a resolution to approve and accept a grant in the amount of $114,354 from the United States Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to support the FSM Preventive Health and Health Services Block Grant 2025, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for adoption of CR number 24, 24 dash 81.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number 24 dash 81. Discussion.
Question.
If no objection, no further discussion. Question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote on the adoption of the resolution. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number 24 dash 81. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number 24 dash 84 for adoption. CR number 24 dash 84 is a resolution to approve and accept a grant in the amount of $341,164 from the United States Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to support the FSM Paerol Risk Factors Surveillance System or PRFS program, including all the terms and conditions of the grant assistance.
Madam Chair Conman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move to defer this Congressional Resolution Number 24 dash 84 for January.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer its action on CR number 24 dash 84 to the next session of Congress, which is in January. The motion is not debatable, so we will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now deferred its action on CR number 24 dash 84 to January session. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number 24 dash 85 for adoption. CR number 24 dash 85 is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Stephen L. George to serve, to serve as a member of the Board of Regents of the College of Magnesia FSM, representing the state of Koshai.
Madam Chair Abelio Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move to adopt CR number 24 dash 85.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number 24 dash 85. Discussion.
Question.
No objection. Debate is closed. We will vote by secret ballot. Short recess. Chief Clerk, please pass out the ballots. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please announce the results.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. All 13 members that are present voted for the nominee under the said resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. With that, Congress has adopted CR number 24 dash 85, so let us please give Mr. George a round of applause. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now back on Congressional Resolution Number 24 dash 88 for adoption.
Chairman Nemea.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the deferment of action on this and to recommit it to the Committee on Ways and Means for further work.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that CR number 24 dash 88 be deferred. The motion is not debatable, so we will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CR number 24 dash 88 has been deferred to the next or has been recommitted to the committee. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
None, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Christian.
I'd like, I would like to place one resolution on the calendar, resolution calendar. I move to place 2495 on today's resolution calendar for action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place on today's calendar for action CR number 24 dash 95. Floor leader, any motion for...
I move that Congress suspend any rule or relevant rules that impede our action.
Any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress suspend the rules that may impede our action on placement of resolutions. Any objections to that said motion? If none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We're now on discussion of placement of CR number 24 dash 95.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Speaker.
Chairman Chor.
I'd like to amend Senator Christian's motion to also withdraw and place Congressional Resolution 24 dash 89 and 24 dash 53. So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the motion by Chairman Christian be amended to include CR number 24 dash 89 and 24 dash 53. Discussion.
Mr. Speaker. May I make a motion to add another resolution?
Make your motion. Short recess.
Second.
Congress is back in session. We are now on discussion on the amendment, to the amendment offered by Chairman Chor to the motion made by Chairman Christian. Any discussions, objections to that motion? If none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The following, the motion now is to place CR number 24 dash 95, 24 dash 89, and 24 dash 53. Madam Chair Abelio Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to propose an amendment to the prior amendment proposed by Chairman Chor on the resolutions placed on the calendar for action to include CR 24 dash 75 and CR 24 dash 96. I saw move.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Short recess, please.
Short recess. To place on today's calendar for action CR number 24 dash 95, 24 dash 89, and 24 dash 53. Any objections to the placement of those three resolutions? If none, we will vote on the placements. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now placed on today's calendar for action CR number 24 dash 95, CR 24 dash 89, and CR 24 dash 53. Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Christian.
I defer the floor to Senator Abelio for...
Madam Chair Abelio Alfonso.
So am I to place my resolution? Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to place CR number 24 dash 75 and 24 dash 96 for Congress action on today's calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place on today's calendar for action CR number 24 dash 75 and 24 dash 96. Please note that the rules are still suspended on placements of resolutions. Any objections and discussions on tho, those two resolutions for placement? If none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Those two resolutions have now been placed on today's calendar for action. We now have on today's resolution calendar, resolution 24 dash 95, 24 dash 89, 24 dash 53, 24 dash 75, and 24 dash 96. Chief Clerk, next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the resolution calendar is Congressional Resolution Number 24 dash 95 for adoption. CR number 24 dash 95 is a resolution to confirm the nomination of Mr. Henry H. True to serve as the Council General for the FSM Council General Office in Honolulu, Hawaii.
Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, I move for adoption of resolution 2495.
Say again.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number 24 dash 95. Discussion.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Christian.
There's a harsh keeping in the title where it says for the FSM Council General Office. It should be consulate. And I'm sure Chief Clerk and Elsie can correct that.
Yes, corrections will be made. I've just been informed by our, our legal counsel that it's a technical issue. Okay, so any discussion on the said resolution?
Question.
If no objection, no further discussion. Question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote by secret ballot. Chief Clerk, please pass the ballots. Chief Clerk, please pass the ballots. Congress, back in session. We had some technical difficulties, so I'm ruling that we do a, a separate secret ballot. So, Chief Clerk, please pass out the ballots. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, please announce the results. Chief Clerk, please announce the results.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. All four, all thirteen members that are present voted for the nominee under the said resolution.
With that, Congress has adopted CR number 24-95. Let us give Mr. Henry a round of applause. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the resolution calendar is Congressional Resolution number 24-89 for adoption. CR number 24-89 is a resolution expressing the sincere appreciation of the twenty-fourth Congress of the Federated States of Magnesia to the government and people of the Republic of Palau and their Ministry of Health for its medical services, support, and assistance for the funeral arrangements for the late Joseph J. Urosomal, sixth president of the to support the FSM project current, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Madam Chair, Abelia Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move to adopt CR number 24-75.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number 24-75. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, but no objection, question was called for. Debate is closed. We will vote on the said resolution. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number 24-75. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Resolution number 24-96 for adoption. CR number 24-96 is a resolution to encourage the courts in the state of Chuk to efficiently issue decisions in cases once they have been heard.
Chairman Chor.
Ayeeel to Chairman Goulon.
Chairman Goulon.
Move for adoption of the said resolution.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number 24-96. Discussion.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
This is a very important resolution because what it does is it shows that members of Congress recognize the problem in the state of Chuk that they currently have. My concern for my vote is if I vote yes, which I think I will, is for that court to say... Excuse me.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the said resolution?
Question, Mr. Speaker.
If no objection, question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote on the adoption of the said resolution. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number 24-96. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
None, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Madam Chair, Abelia Alfonso.
My apologies, Mr. Speaker, but I have overlooked placing a resolution that's very time sensitive. So I'd like to place, make a motion to place this resolution for Congress.
Make your motion.
Move to place CR number 24-94 for action on today's calendar.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress placed on today's resolution calendar for action, CR number 24-94. Please note that the rules are still suspended. So any objections to the placement of the said resolution? If none, debate is closed. We will vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now placed on today's calendar for action, CR number 24-94. Chief Clerk. Next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next resolution is Congressional Resolution number 24-94 for adoption. CR number 24-94 is a resolution to approve and accept a grant in the amount of $3,074,455 from the United States Department of Education to support the second phase of the FSM special education program, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
And Madam Chair, Abelia Alfonso.
Four.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number 24-94. Discussion.
Question.
If no objection, question has been called for. We will vote on its adoption. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number 24-94. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As of now, we do not have any more resolutions.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker.
If no objection, I move that we go back up to item number 19, the bill calendar. Chairman Christian. Yes.
I would like to venture a motion that we recess until 2 o'clock.
Any... It's been moved and seconded that Congress recess until 2 o'clock this afternoon. Any objections to that said motion?
Oh, really?
If none, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay.
Short recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. The motion was not adopted. So I ruled that we go up to, back up with no objections to item number 19, which is the bill calendar. Chief Clerk, next bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number 24-92 for second and final reading. CB number 24-92 is a bill for an act to amend sections 1, 3, 8, 9, and 14 of Public Law number 24-39 to appropriate $2,607,715 in supplemental funding from the General Fund of the Federated States of Magnesia for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2026, to provide funding for the operating expenses of the legislative branch, grants, subsidies, and contributions, and capital and human resource development to change the allottee of certain funds appropriated funds, and for other purposes.
Chairman Lemia.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of Congressional Bill 24-92 on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second reading, CB number 24-92. Discussion. Chairman Goulon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The reading amendment, I move to offer a reading amendment as be disputed and segregated to our members. So move.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Lemia.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the, offer a floor amendment to the proposed amendment by...
We're not, we're, short recess. It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment offered to CB number 24-92 offered by Chairman Goulon be adopted. Discussion.
Speaker.
Chairman Lemia.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to harbor a floor amendment to the proposed amendment by Chairman Goulon. And because of the length of the amendment, and it's also written. And so I move that we dispense with the reading of that.
Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion on the offered floor amendment to CB number number 24 24-92 offered by Chairman Goulon. Chairman Lemia.
Mr. Speaker, let me just point out for clarification, my amendment is really for the bill itself, not for Goulon's amendment.
Short recess. Congress is back in session.
Well, before you make the hammer.
Yes.
Speaker, I just, I just don't agree with the way that he positioning the medical assistant on our side because that process is really take long to process.
Okay, we're still on discussion on your amendment, Chairman Golen, so any further discussion? If no objection, question has been called for. We will vote on the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety two offered by Chairman Golen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried, the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety two offered by Chairman Golen
Speaker.
has been adopted. We now have CD one.
Speaker.
Chairman Golen.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I move that we close debate on this amendment.
Any second. Chairman Nemia?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a floor amendment to the bill and the the amendment offered by Senator or Chairman Kulan. And it's written and it's been distributed to everyone. And so I move.
Short recess, please.
Short recess.
What is, is that CD one?
Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion on CB number twenty four dash ninety two, CD one. Chairman Nemia?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to offer a floor amendment to CB twenty four dash ninety two, CD one. And the offer amendment is, has been distributed, and so I move.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety two offered by Chairman Nemia to twenty four dash ninety two, CD one be adopted.
Speaker.
Discussion. Chairman Golen.
I wish to offer a oral amendment to the amendment offered by Chairman Nemia on the Alati section from President to Secretary of the CNI. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Well, that motion was not seconded, Chairman Golen? Not yet. We're still on discussion on his. So your subsidiary amendment that you've made on that amendment was not seconded. So we're still on discussion on the offered floor amendment.
I move for the previous question.
No objection. Question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety two, CD one offered by Chairman Nemia. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The offered floor amendment has been adopted and we now have CB twenty four dash ninety two, CD two.
Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Golen.
I wish to offer a oral amendment to the amendment made by CT two.
And what is your motion, Chairman Golen?
To move the Alati from President to Secretary of the CNI. So move.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety two, CD two offered by Chairman Golen orally be adopted. Discussion.
Question.
No further discussion and no objection. Question was called for. We will vote on the offered oral amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety two, CD two offered by Chairman Golen. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The offered oral amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety two was adopted by Congress, so now we have CD three. We're still on discussion on the
Oh, I would assume, Mr. Speaker, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Now it's Chairman Nemia's turn to move to amend back to his bill. We keep going like this, we ain't going anywhere.
I move for the main motion, Speaker.
Short recess. We're still on discussion on CB number twenty four dash ninety two, CD three. If no further discussion, we will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll. And as yesterday, Madam Chair Grundmann will cast the vote for Tuk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Tuk, Madam Chair Grundmann?
Yes.
For the state of Funpei, Chairman Christian. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Sigra.
Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Chor.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number twenty four dash ninety two, CD three. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number twenty four dash ninety three for second and final reading. CB number twenty four dash ninety three is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number nineteen dash ten as amended by Public Laws numbers nineteen dash twenty six, nineteen dash forty two, nineteen dash fifty one, nineteen dash fifty six, nineteen dash seventy two, nineteen dash seventy eight, nineteen dash ninety six, nineteen dash one thirty two, nineteen dash one sixty three, twenty dash oh three, twenty dash twenty five, twenty dash fifty eight, twenty dash seventy six, twenty dash one sixteen, twenty one dash twenty nine, twenty one dash sixty four, twenty one dash one ninety six, twenty two dash ten, twenty two dash one thirty three, twenty three dash eighty four, twenty three dash one sixty three, and twenty four dash twelve by amending sections four and six thereof to change the use and Alatiya funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs in the state of Funpei and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that CB twenty four dash ninety three be passed on second and final reading. And so I move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second reading, CB number twenty four dash ninety three. Discussion.
Speaker.
Madam Chair.
I'd like to offer a floor amendment.
Go ahead.
I move to, for a floor amendment, copies to CB number twenty four dash ninety three. Written copies have been distributed to members. I so move.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered written amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety three offered by Madam Chair Abellio Fonse be adopted. Because of its length, we will dispense with the reading. Discussion on the offered floor amendment. No objection. Discussion is, debate is closed. Question was called for, so we'll vote on the offered floor amendment. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The offered floor amendment to CB number twenty four dash ninety three offered by Madam Chair Abellio Fonse been adopted. We now have CD one. Any further discussion? If no objection, question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote on CB number twenty four dash ninety three, CD one, on second and final reading. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Tuk, Madam Chair Grundmann?
Yes.
For the state of Funpei, Chairman Christian. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Sigra.
Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Chor. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, CB number twenty four dash ninety three. Next bill, Chief Clerk. CD one.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next bill is Congressional Bill number twenty four dash ninety five for second and final reading. CB number twenty four dash ninety five is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number nineteen dash one twenty one as amended by Public Laws numbers nineteen dash one thirty, nineteen dash one forty two, nineteen dash one forty five, nineteen dash one fifty eight, twenty dash one nine, twenty dash twenty two, twenty dash fifty one, twenty dash fifty nine, twenty dash seventy, twenty dash one twenty three, twenty dash one sixty two, twenty dash one seventy, twenty one dash thirty five, twenty one dash sixty six, twenty one dash one twelve, twenty one dash one twenty seven, twenty one dash one seventy six, twenty one dash one ninety eight, twenty two dash oh seven, twenty two dash one ten, twenty two dash one eighty two, twenty three dash eighty six, and twenty three dash one fifty nine by amending section three thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of the state of Koshai and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemia?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for the passage of CB twenty four dash ninety five on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second reading, CB number twenty four dash ninety five. Discussion. No objection. Question has been called for. Debate is closed. We will vote by roll call of delegations. We will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chu, Madam Chair Konman.
Yes.
For the state of Funpei, Chairman Christian. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Sigra.
Yes.
For the state of Yap, Chairman Chur. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second reading, CB number 24-95. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill number 24-82 for second and final reading. CB number 24-82 is a bill for an act to further amend section 14 of Public Law number 23-24, amended by Public Law's numbers 23-46 and 23-119 in order to change the Alatiya of certain funds previously appropriated for the office of the independent prosecutor and for other purposes.
Chairman Nemea?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to defer action on this bill until next session.
It's been moved and seconded at CB number 24-82. Be deferred to next session. The motion is not debatable, so we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now deferred this action on CB number 24-82. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As of now, we do not have any more bills, Mr. Speaker.
If no objection, we will move down to item number 21. Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Item 21 is on the introduction of bills and resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
If you have any measures to introduce, please pass them forward to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Item 22, miscellaneous business.
Miscellaneous business.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
Mr. Speaker, I hasten to ask for this time to thank, first, the government of the United States for its generosity to continue to allow us to access the AIP programs under the FAA administration. Secondly, while I may have some differences of opinion with that government and some of its administrators, the fact that this country is eligible for and receives generous support from the federal programs of the United States, I'd also like to say thank you for that. But also go on to say that the recipients and administrators of these programs must report to Congress how they use all these grants and whether or not we should continue asking for them or seek other programs from the United States that may better be geared to our needs in the FSN. That's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Christian, for pointing that out. Yes, we have so many reports that have yet to come by Congress. Some of them are required by law. One of them is the fund balances for the public projects. I don't believe... I've seen one in the past seven years or so. So thank you, Chairman Christian. Any more miscellaneous business? If none...
Most understand for recess until Monday morning, then.
Mr. Speaker.
Short recess.
On behalf of the floor leader and myself, who had, for a few seconds, was appointed acting floor leader, I move that this special session of Congress adjourned, sign a aye.
It's been moved and seconded at Congress adjourned, sign a aye. And I would just like to assure you, because no motion was made, that the presiding officers will review the journal as necessary. And if there are necessary changes, then it will not be substantive, but rather in accordance with what was discussed, so...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
So that motion to adjourn, sign a aye, has been seconded, so let us vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. May we all rise? I hereby declare the second special session of the 24th Congress adjourned, sign a aye.
Thank you.